We'll call to order the meeting of the Grand Forks Public School District for Monday, January 27th. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask you to stand as you're able. Just a couple of notes. Amber Flynn is joining us by telephone. 1A, the reading of the school board meeting norms. Mr. Manley.
The school board meeting norms. Number one, be prepared. Number two, be on time. Number three, value and respect each other. Number four, exercise thoughtful deliberation in conversation. Number five, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public. Number six, speak up when the norms are not being followed. And number seven, advocate on behalf of students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you. Item two is the approval of tonight's agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as... Oh, it's been moved by Mr. Paul Messino. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Lund. Any discussion? Take a roll call vote.
Hodeck?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Kevin is absent. Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yeah.
Paul Messino?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
And Berger?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no, one absent.
Motion passes. Item three on our agenda is our public comment period. I don't have any blue cards turned in tonight. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting? Onto five. These are superintendent's recommendations for discussion. 5A, our high school attendance update. Dr. Glatch.
Thank you Chair Berger. So with us tonight are the esteemed Dr. Chris Arison and Mr. John Strandell. Gentlemen, you can come on up to the microphone. If you recall, at the beginning of the year, they briefed us on a new attendance policy that was put in place at both of our main high school campuses in an effort to address chronic absenteeism. At that time, they shared with you the repercussions of chronic absenteeism, how our numbers have been exacerbated since the pandemic. And tonight, since one semester is in the books, they're here to provide us an update on how this has gone. So I will turn the microphone over to Dr. Arison.
All right, thank you. We good? All right, thank you. Thanks for having us. We're happy to be back and share with you a little information about the new attendance policy and how that's affected our day-to-day operations at both Red River and Central High School. We just wanted to take a minute and kind of just refresh your memory. Dr. Glatch just kind of talked with you about it briefly, but why we did this and why we decided to take this on. And really, we had five different reasons, big reasons. First one is learning loss. The amount of school, the kids were missing. We were starting to see a significant learning loss in our classrooms. And whether that be grades, standardized test score, whatever the case may be, we were seeing those scores dip down. And we know that the best place to be for kids is in school. We know that learning is social. Yes, you can miss school and you can make up your work, but you miss that socialization. You miss the discussions with your partner. You miss the group work with the colleagues in your classes. And so we were seeing a lot of that happening. So we really wanted to focus in on the learning loss. We wanted kids in school. We thought that was the best place for them to be, in front of our teachers and working with their colleagues. We needed to reprioritize attendance. As you can see, some of the numbers there, prior to COVID and after COVID, we saw the amount of sick leave actually double from prior to COVID to after COVID. And so we really wanted to focus in on getting attendance at the forefront and really stating the importance of that and why we needed to really focus in and get kids back in class and have them there for learning. Another thing we were seeing was this was really burning out our teachers. Every time a kid is gone and they miss a test or they miss key instruction, that needs to be made up. And that's made up on teacher's prep time, before school, after school, teachers chasing around kids, trying to get them coming in on their free period. And it takes a lot of time and effort to go over that individually when it's something you just did the day before. And you might have to do it multiple times in order to catch kids up. So we were seeing teacher burnout when it came to trying to get kids caught up. So that was another one of our big reasons. Strain on resources. The resources that we had prior to what, three, four years ago, John? Yep. We used to, kids that were truant, we used social services. We use juvenile court. Those services were not available to us anymore. It was really hard to get that kind of support. So we needed to try to do something at the school level. And keep in mind, this did put more work, more strain on social workers, counselors, associate principals, everybody trying to keep track of this. But we feel in the long run, it's been making a big difference. So that's been positive. And then the other one is school accountability. We as schools have an accountability factor when it comes to attendance rates. Those attendance rates are supposed to be 95% or higher. And so that was something we were being held accountable to. So we needed to find some ways in order to make that work and get those numbers up. So just wanted to give you the why, kind of refresh your memory on why we did that. And so with that, I'll turn it over to John and he'll explain some of the tiers again.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Arison. So just as a reminder, first of all, if we didn't call this a pilot, but I would say the first semester was the pilot of a high school attendance intervention plan. So as we moved through the plan that we unveiled in August to you, I think we found ways that we needed to tweak things. One of them, and I can, I think probably for both of us, but I can speak for Central, was how do we account for all of this information? How do we organize it so that it's fair and consistent, applied equally, and communicated correctly throughout? So back to the tiers that were our part of our plan. Tier one, of course, was six absences in a semester would trigger a text home from the office at either Central or Red River, alerting parents and guardians to the fact that your student has been absent six times in a singular class. And attached to that was the intervention plan so that families would know what the next steps were should attendance continue to be poor and move in the wrong direction. If that does happen, and we reached tier two, which was 10 absences in a semester, that triggered communication from the school social worker to the home to really dig into, okay, at this point, your student's not coming to school. What are the barriers to that? What can we do to help? Is it a transportation issue? Are there other issues within the home that the school can act as a support to? Not to say that those conversations didn't also happen prior to all of this. I know that we, during the first week of school, if somebody was absent two of those first four days, we reached out to them to find out right away, what are the barriers? Is there something going on? Has somebody moved? Are you okay? All of those things. So this is more formalized in tier two, I would say, at 10 absences. Should we get to tier three, which starts after the 12th absence, that was the time where really, when Chris talked about the strain on the resources and the fact that we are kind of taking the place of some of the things that juvenile court and social services used to play in the past, those then became the schools. Those were what we would call teeth, right? There was something in the game, a consequence for somebody one way or the other, whether it was support, whether it was a probation officer because you haven't been coming to school. Those things weren't available to us anymore. So in this plan, tier three is really the first time there's teeth to a student. And that one would begin with the assistant principal inviting the student into the office, communicating with home to say, we've reached tier three. Any absence after this will be a zero. It can't be made up. And you'll get a zero moving forward. It's not, so it starts to impact the grade for a student. If we move on to the 18th absence, of course, that gets us to the place we didn't want to be, which was a drop or a transfer, right? At this point, a student would be dropped from a class. This would trigger visiting with the counselor to look at really where are we at in terms of your graduation progress? What is the next best step for you? And then enrollment in an online course, depending about the timing of this drop, so that the student could recover the credit. If the drop happens really close to the end of the semester and there's not time for a course to be enrolled in, then we would look at, okay, we probably need to start planning for summer school or when we're going to within your high school career, make up that missing credit. Okay, because this was a work in progress, we're looking at this first semester as really a resetting of a norm, right? It was really, we're going to go through this, kids are going to see, and they say that, I guess you guys are serious about this stuff, right? You're really going to do this? Yes, we are really going to do this. So I look at those numbers up there and the percentages. And in terms of actual students, they're really close. I have those numbers if you're curious. But you can see, there really isn't a huge change from last year first semester to this year in tier one, tier two, or tier three. But in tier four, there's quite a big jump there in the number of kids that were actually dropped from a class compared to those kids that would have had 18 or more, and in some cases, many more absences in the past, without repercussions, by the way. They would still be in that class, oftentimes earning an F. Dr. Lund, you have a question?
John, is that 22% of all the students?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were thinking the same thing. Thank you.
Yep. And I was speaking to Joe Drum a little bit before the meeting because we presented to the central staff a couple of weeks ago, and our numbers looked much better than this. And I said, once, until we figured out, within the program we were using to pull this data, we realized kids with perfect attendance weren't being counted. So once we threw that into the enrollment, then the numbers didn't look quite as positive as they were when we shared with staff prior to that. Okay, Red River's numbers.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So here's Red River numbers. I did put the student numbers in there, just so you could see the difference that you're seeing when it comes to percentages and the students in those, in those different tiers. Like you say, we're not seeing, you can see the difference in those tier twos from last school year to this school year, tier two, tier three, we're definitely improving in those areas. And so overall, I think it's pretty positive when you look at the differences between the students and the days missed. I did do some quick calculations. We ran a quick run of the class periods missed first semester last year to first semester this year. And we were at, last year, first semester, 57,334 periods were missed by all students, 1,200 students, yeah. And this year, we were at 37,261. So a decrease of 20,000 class periods that were missed from first semester last year to this year. And I will agree with what John says. Kids are like, oh, you are serious. This is going to happen. So we are definitely seeing a difference in that with the amount of school days missed. And so it's been overall really positive that way. Obviously, we would like to see that tier four at zero. But we are at 49 on that one. So, but when you look at what it was last year, the difference between tier two and tier three, I mean, that's where you're seeing our significant big number decreases as well. So, and I think, last, next slide, John?
Sure. Attendance rates, I think Dr. Arison said one of the ways that schools are being held accountable is through the Choice Ready platform. 95% attendance is one of the indicators whether or not a school is meeting Choice Ready. So this information, this data comes off of ND Insights. I think some of you have been there previously, but it's publicly available to you. So that 95% number is pretty important. So you can see our numbers from last year to this year, and both schools would meet that 95% threshold, which is pretty awesome. That's a big jump. And that's important to us in terms of that accountability pie that goes with Choice Ready. So that was good news to see. And then, all of this is hard data, right? Pretty quantifiable. I think the thing that teachers would say to us from the beginning is, kids are talking about school. They're talking about school attendance. That's something they weren't talking about in the past. So we asked teachers, we see the data, but can you tell us what, what it feels like for you in the classroom? So the first one is from a grade nine English teacher that I think Joe Drum knows. And so you can tell, English teachers are a little wordier than maybe a science teacher. So you can read through the whole thing that you have right there. But I think the big thing was, it wasn't the, what Dr. Arison referenced earlier, a student being gone, coming back in and said, help me catch up, help me pass, right? Where it became incumbent upon the teacher to do all the work. That students were a lot more mindful about their absences and what it meant in making sure they weren't gone. I think for her, she says, her prep time can now be used solely to keep up on grading, responding to parent emails, planning lessons, and visiting kids in their tutorial classes to help them with their current assignments. What a relief. The second one from a social studies teacher, and we also prefaced this in the fall when we began this, is the numbers in these tiered systems are quite high. We're uncomfortable with them. I previously probably mentioned to you that prior to COVID, our handbook would say that a student could miss eight times in a semester. And beyond that, they could be dropped. So this tier four was 18 times. Again, we're resetting the norms, right, and realizing that 18 is a big number that needs to come down. And that's what this social studies teacher is saying. The policy is a good start, but the numbers need to be adjusted. And he makes a good point. One way to promote workforce readiness in our schools is to have higher expectations for showing up. There's really no teacher who would have had a problem with it. It was all positive. It is a lot more work, Dr. Arison said, really for office staff, for counselors, for social workers, particularly assistant principals in there too. It has been a load. But our hope is that we put in all the work semester one so that the system is in place and it just becomes the norm. And really, we take care of that. And it's not quite as labor-intensive as it was so far. Also, I think our systems are a lot more in place, too.
Yeah. And I would just say too, we had a department chair meeting at Red River a couple of weeks ago. And we always go over our attendance data. And that was one thing that I asked, is this policy making a difference? And with 17 department chairs in the classroom, there was 17 nyes. And it's significantly different with the amount of kids coming to school, keeping up to date, getting their assignments done, and being more successful in their classes. So yes, it's been definitely positive and has made a big difference in our school, for our teachers and our students, more importantly, our students coming to school. So, questions?
Just a reminder, this is a recommendation for discussion. There's no action at the board table tonight, but any questions or clarifying comments from board members? Dr. Lund?
Just a couple comments. I agree with the social studies teacher that you probably do need to tighten it up. I agree with that. And I'd be remiss not to give you the feedback I've gotten from the medical community. Hasn't been quite as positive, which we talked about at the beginning of the year. Because I'll routinely get calls from a mom saying, well, Johnny missed school last day, last week, three days. I need an excuse. Well, I never saw Johnny, you know, do you want me to commit fraud? And, or what? So it's, we work through that. But it's, it's, it's hard to argue with the numbers. And I think it's, it's well worth it. Somehow, we'll have to work out how to, how to deal with those medical excuses. Because I think some of the kids are using that as an, they weren't sick. They're using that to get, get an excuse. But, but there's no doubt that it looks like it's successful. And I do agree that over time, you'll, you'll find the sweet spot of how many, how many do you need each semester? So, thank you.
Others. Dr. Hodeck?
Yes. You have information from the staff that you've been working with and such. What about showing this data to students and showing this data to parents?
We certainly could include that in our newsletters, for sure. I think that would help tell the story. That's a good point.
And then, and then have you also been looking at, for this improvement, then I would assume that grades are improving as well, too?
Go ahead, sir.
Just got these things here. Hold on a second.
We don't always dress alike, if you're one.
So first semester, we had a 43% decrease in Fs and a 16% decrease in Ds. Yep.
We have yet to capture that data. So what I would assume it would be an improvement as well.
I would encourage you, strongly encourage you, to make sure that this gets in the hands of, one, for sure, the community on it, and then also with those parents. Those parents need to see this.
Yep. Dr. Lund?
Dr. Arison, when you put your glasses on, I can't tell you two apart. So keep yours off so I can tell who's who up there. Thank you.
I have just a couple more if there aren't any others. Sure. Mr. Paul Messino?
My only one is, do you see the Career Academy helping with some of those kids that are chronic absentees?
I mean, we hope so. The one thing about the Career Academy is, we're not going to have a lot of freshmen in the Career Academy. And I know sometimes those are, can be some of our biggest challenges as, as students come into high school. Keeping them, you know, credits matter, right? Day one, it starts and credits matter. And sometimes, it'd be nice to get them hooked a little bit earlier into some of those careers. But I think in the long run, definitely, if we can, you know, continue to improve their freshman year and ensure they get credits and move out into those Career Academies and get into the workforce, I definitely think there'll be a positive effect on that.
Yes, Dr. Glatch.
Yeah, and I anticipate the question might come, I think it came last time, about what about the other levels? And so I have a slide up here from the Department of Instruction that talks about, I'll just read you the slide. Children who are chronically absent in preschool, kindergarten, and first grade are much less likely to read on grade level by third grade. Students who cannot read at grade level by third grade are four times more likely to drop out of high school. And so we are aware as a district that this is not just a high school problem, it's a middle school problem, it's a, all the way through preschool problem. And so at each of those levels, there are task forces that are organized that are really trying to figure out how to creatively attack this issue. Dr. Arison mentioned the fact that we don't have the same access to some of the supports that we once did through social services, through the juvenile justice system that would help us kind of have that next level of authority to help families get their kids to school. And so we've been trying to creatively problem solve around that. These folks jointly, I think, hosted a meeting with a bunch of our local legislators so that they understood the repercussions of attendance, to engage that level of investment so that we could look at it statewide. And there have been also forums held at Valley Middle School with some of our local entities as well. The Attorney General's Office had some representation there so that they can understand really what we're looking at. For us, it's, it comes down to a couple of simple things. It comes down to student's achievement. What is our mission as a school system? It's to make sure that kids achieve academically and they're well-prepared for their next step post-graduation. It's really impossible for us to do that if we're not working with them, kind of common sense. But we also care about their well-being. And when we don't have kids in front of us, we worry about what they might be doing or not doing. You know, it's the concept of in local parentis, and I'm not saying that at home, they're not under care, but for some of our students, they're not. And we believe in working with our school resource officers that as kids get older and have access to more things, there could be some community-wide repercussions in that regard. So it's a really complex problem. And I just want to commend these folks in front of you for digging into it and to trying a creative solution or resurrecting, I guess, an older solution to see if it could catch some muster and make a difference, and it is. We also know for those kids that are being removed from classes, we have work to do so that they don't become these dropouts. And that's a whole nother side conversation, but there are some systems that we have already to support them as well. And now the trick is to get them engaged.
I would echo that commendation for thinking creatively, for digging in, for following the data, for coming back as we had asked to give us the update. My only other question, because I was going to ask the follow-up about other levels, bringing students along. You did a great job of capturing some of the themes that you've heard, some of that, some of the narrative from staff. Any themes popping up from families, from parents, from students that you're hearing, positive or otherwise, about, I think you captured a bit of it. Yes, they're serious, yes, they are going to do this. But have you, have you heard anything else that, that might be coming to one, one or two key thoughts?
Sure. I was going to follow up on that. Of course, we've heard from both, right? I know when you talk about the medical community, I know notes are important. And I think our healthcare providers are getting much more in tune with our new policy. And they're just giving the kids appointment notes, right, as they come and go. And I think parents are getting more in tune to being sure they get those doctor's notes. That's why we have 12 days, right? A kid who's gone for three days sick and they don't go see their healthcare professional, really, that shouldn't be a problem, right? So we've heard from some families that are obviously upset with it. But I've also heard from families who say, thank you. This has been the best thing for my son or my daughter. They now know they need to get to school, right? They need to get there. And so I've heard both from students. I think one story I heard where this girl was walking by, she was a senior, and I said, how are you today? I got a headache. She goes, but because of your attendance policy, I'm here today, she said. And she keeps walking. She goes, but I do need to go to work after this, so I'll be okay. Right? You know, so, yeah. I think students know, you know, we hear it a little bit, but I think students know that it was being taken advantage of at some point. And so I haven't really heard a lot of pushback. And like I say, from families, I've heard both positive and some negative.
Adriana, I don't want to put you on the spot. Obviously, you have perfect attendance, right? Obviously, you have perfect attendance, right? Just nod with me. Your friend, your friend group, anybody talk about the policy and have comments about it one way or the other?
Oh, yes. It is very much talked about amongst the school, one hundred percent. Not just my friend group, too. I feel like I hear lots of people, like teachers and students and just faculty, talking about this policy. And I think that that just shows how effective it is. Like, people are realizing, oh, yeah, I gotta go to school, you know? And I think that's cool. I think that's good. I think that's a good step in the beginning of this, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we have you sit down, I'm aware we do have one board member by phone. So just want to check in to see if Amber has anything for either of you.
I can't really talk, so, no, I don't.
I'll speak on her behalf. She says she's struggling with her voice, so she can't really think of anything. Dr. Hodak?
Just one other comment to add is that I work with the Head Start program and what Tracy Johnson and her group are doing with that level. So I'm actually seeing it from that level all the way to this level. And I think we have a group of educators that are using every resource that they possibly can get a hold of, but that there is a commitment, it appears, from the educators to make those contacts with those families, with those parents, to get them started. So if they're getting that already at Head Start, I think that it's just something that speaks volumes for the district in taking a good look at this. But I think it's important that the community and important that our families understand this.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to six A, this is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as stated in your board packet. It's been moved by Mr. Larson. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Manley. We'll take a roll call vote.
Larson?
Yes.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Clevin is absent. Lund?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
H S, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Item six B, general fund financial statement. Mr. Brandon Baumach.
Thank you, President. Berger, members of the board, say my apologies on the outset. I had, if you'd looked at the board packet over the weekend, you'd notice that this, I grabbed the wrong documents and included them from through November thirtieth, and they really should be through December thirty-first. And so that has been corrected. If you're looking at the packet online, that was an error on my part. The good news is they really haven't changed a lot. It's updated one more month here, so I can run through those numbers and get everyone up to speed. For the first six months of the fiscal year, total general fund revenues was fifty-seven point six million dollars and the expenditures at forty-nine point seven million. So that puts those revenues over expenditures about seven point nine million. There's not, there's some notes here. As you know, the first financial statement just articulates how we're doing against the budget. And you could see that summary of revenues at the first page of that is forty-four point three percent, whereas the expenditures are running about thirty-eight percent of the budget. So we're on the positive side of that, which is what we would see really normally. When we compare, and we will, with just the most recent years, some of the COVID dollars kind of confuses that a little bit. But I would say this is normal, especially compared to those prior to COVID years. One thing to note on the local sources is property taxes. Really, up until this point in the year, these are deficient property tax payments. But now that we're in the new year and all of us taxpayers begin to pay our tax payments, we'll see that property tax jump up here at the next report that you'll receive. Otherwise, the first three pages as labeled are through, like I said, comparison against the budget. And the second report entitled that year-over-year comparison is where we can kind of see where are we at this point in time compared to the prior year. And in this regard, you can see our revenues are a little bit more than the prior year at two point seven percent over last year. And our expenditures are down compared to the year prior of ten point three percent. That that being less than expenditures is largely explained by the COVID dollars that we had planned on spending last year and were spending last year. And now that those have gone away, we're not spending those this year. I make just a couple of notes that correspond with the rest of the report here. But graphically, as you know, we we chart the revenues, expenditures, and then the balance. And you can see where revenues are on par with the past couple of years. Expenditures, just a little bit lower. So we're really on the positive side of that story. Where it comes together on the general fund balance, I explained last time. It shoots up there. And a part of that is, in comparison to the past two years, it looks abnormal. And that would be because a lot of those COVID dollars were spent. And then we would seek reimbursement on a quarterly basis. And so the revenues were not there to match the expenditures. So I would expect in that next report, you'll see those lines begin to kind of average out a little bit, too. But I'm I'm very interested to see if we can keep that positive headwind moving forward. Very happy to answer any questions on these financials through December thirty-first, not November thirtieth. But otherwise, the administrative recommendation would be to approve the general fund financial statement as as presented within the board packet to date.
Questions for Mr. Baumach? I would entertain a motion to approve the general fund financial statement for July one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. It's been moved by Mr. Anderson. Is there a second? A second by Dr. Hodak? Any discussion? Take a roll call vote?
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Clevin is absent. Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
H S, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Item six C, policy review. We have five policies listed for consideration of their second reading and adoption. These are AAC, FDD, ACF, BA, and IAD. The policy review committee and district administration recommendation is to complete the second reading and adopt the policies named above as presented. I would entertain that motion to approve those five policies for their second reading and adoption. It's been moved by Mr. Manley. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Lund. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Lund?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Clevin absent. Hodak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
H S, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Six D, consideration of use of building fund for Kelly Elementary air handler. I believe this is Brandon Baumach and possibly Jonathan Elwine. Not sure where we're going first.
Yeah, well, I'd be happy to welcome Jonathan up. He needs no introduction, but our Buildings and Grounds Director, Jonathan Elwine, has done some work on on a problem that has arisen and a solution for the problem.
Thank you, Brandon. So after we completed our our big project over at Kelly Elementary to get a new HVAC system in part of that building, there were aging components in that as well. And in the nineteen eighty-nine addition, which is the gym and the music rooms, right after we had completed that, we had this nice air-conditioned building, and we lost it in that one section. So we came up with a temporary solution. We brought in some some portable units, but that's not a good solution for us. So we worked with our partners at Johnson Controls, and we we found a solution as laid out in the memo. There are three parts to this. We'll be purchasing the air handler individually, and that will allow us to save any sales tax or markup from them. So then we'll be purchasing it directly. And then the install, they will take care of the install. And then I've got a piece on there, a seven and a half percent contingency. That's just in case we we run into something that was unexpected. Hopefully, we don't have to use it. It just prevents me from having to come back and ask again if we run into a small snag. So what we did is we used the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. So this allowed us to use a company that we're familiar with and we work with a lot and use the same controls and same air handlers that we do across the district as we've been installing them. So as you can see, the air handler is seventy-three thousand three fifty. Installation is sixty-three six fifty, and the contingency is ten thousand two seventy-five for a total of one hundred and forty-seven thousand two seventy-five. And the administrative recommendation is to approve one hundred and forty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-five of building funds to replace the air handler in the nineteen eighty-nine addition. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Elwine? I would entertain a motion to approve one hundred forty-seven thousand two seventy-five of building fund dollars for this project as outlined in the memo. It's been moved by Mr. Palmesino. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Clevin absent. Berger?
Yes.
H S, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Six E, resolution to delegate authority to the administration under North Dakota Century Code fifteen dot one dash zero six dash two one. I believe this is Laura Kopp.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Board members, what you'll find in your packet is a resolution to delegate board authority to the building, school building level. In the twenty twenty-three legislative session, there was an update to North Dakota Century Code that provided that a school board district would establish a plan with the approval of a parent or legal guardian for a use of a separate restroom accommodation for a transgender student. In reviewing this statute, it is my legal recommendation that the board, instead of establishing that plan for each and every transgender student, that it may be more appropriate for that to be handled by our building principals, to meet with those parents, legal guardians, to work through that process together. I believe that would be more timely and more efficient. There wouldn't have to be an executive session held, special meetings held, to establish such a plan for students. And it would just be probably better held for those principals to go ahead and establish that plan under this new legislation that happened in twenty twenty-three. So I believe the resolution is fairly straightforward. It does have that this resolution is indefinite until the school board would go ahead and revoke the delegation of authority to the building's school principals. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for, yep, Dr. Lund?
I noticed in the state law, it doesn't say the board or its or its delegation or designee. But I'm assuming on a legal basis, that's not a problem.
I believe the board has the delegation power to delegate its authority.
Other questions? Dr. Hodak?
I'm not so certain that my questions are for you or for Matt and Catherine at this time. I would be, I would like to know how the principals would be informed of this and if they were discussed, you know, that this would be this authority delegated to them. I would understand that that's probably what the practice has been in buildings with school counselors and such and everything else like that. But I'd also want to see if there's something that we're going to be doing consistently, building to building, principal to principal, as well, too. So that if a school, middle school has a plan for a student, and then they go to Central or Red River, and that plan follows, and Central or Red River have to say, no, we can't do that. So I'm looking for some information. As I said, Laura, this is probably not you. It's more for discussion about this. And then also, because there are two House bills right now on this very issue still happening at the legislature, House Bill eleven forty-four and eleven eighty-one, I'm wondering if we're not a little bit ahead of the game on doing this because right now, I would say that it's working, that the principals are doing this. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I can respond. I think most of the requests come usually at the secondary level as opposed to the elementary level, but it's not exclusively at the secondary level. But what you are describing, Dr. Hodak, is exactly the practice and protocol that's been in place when our school building administrators or the counselors are requested by families and their students to make alternative plans. They do exactly what you described. Ten times out of ten, they consult with me. I imagine the same thing probably happens with Matt so that we make sure that there are those consistencies in practice. And we also have a really comprehensive transition plan meeting schedule set up between buildings. And they staff all kids and their needs, whatever those needs might be. And these plans are also covered accordingly. And so we make sure that there isn't a blip or a disservice done to the family or stepping backwards on what we know is in the best interest of the child. As far as the legislation that's being presented right now, I guess you could look at it as two ways. To me, we have students that we're serving right now who would qualify underneath this practice. And so I don't think it's too late, or too early, I mean. Perhaps it's, it could have been put in place a while ago even. So I think it's a good way for us to take care of kids. And if we have to modify, like we did when we had to take our official policy offline, we will do that.
Any other questions? Dr. Lund?
I just want to say, I agree with Dr. Glatch. I think if anything, we're late on this. And so I think we should we should implement this if we have to change based on new laws. And we can, we can do it at that point, I think. But I think if anything, we're probably a little late rather than too early.
Other questions from board members? I would seek a motion for the school board to adopt this resolution to delegate authority to the administration under North Dakota Century Code fifteen dot one dash zero six dash two one. It's been moved by Dr. Lund. Is there a second? I will second the motion. Any further? Yes, Amber, you have a question? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We'll go to Amber first.
I sent a text to Josh if he could read it on my back.
Do you want to be clear that these are?
These are Amber's?
Yes, okay.
Do we currently have a space in every school district building that would accommodate a separate restroom accommodation? And additionally, what about non-principal ran buildings such as the CIA and MSCC? How would those be managed? Where would the delegation be done? And does the resolution call those out or allow for those?
Do you want to respond to that? Dr. Glatch?
Yeah, I am most certain that there is a facility available in all of our buildings. Sometimes that is a facility that has been modified to be a staff-only access, to be staff and student joint access. As far as, I know in this building, there are many options available or a couple of different options available that are gender neutral. And for the CIA, I'm trying to think of the floor plans right now, but I'm, I don't have that answer because I don't have them memorized. But I anticipate it would be the same as in our other buildings, that there might be an accommodation made through a, what's designated theoretically as a staff-assigned bathroom. I think I answered all of Amber's questions.
I think the secondary piece of it is, what about non-principal ran buildings? So how would those be without a principal in place? How, what process would they work through? Who would be in charge of delegating that facility?
I would imagine it would default to the principal of record. So whatever the students assigned homeschool would be, that would be the administration that would work through the accommodations.
Just because these answers and comments are filtering back to Amber, I do, before we move forward, I want to give her a chance to respond through Josh if she has any more clarifying comments, so.
She says thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Dr. Lund?
Well, I think the purpose of the resolution is we're delegating the authority to to administration. And I think they would be responsible to work out some of those details, not the board. So.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I just, to Dr. Hodak's point, consistency is super important. And I think if we hear otherwise, we need to take this up and figure something else out. But I think this is a logical start.
Other questions, comments from board members? We'll take a roll call vote.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Clevyn absent. Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
H, yes, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Item 7A, announcements. Are there any announcements from board members? I have one that came to me from a staff member over at South, an invitation to a robotics event. Actually, I should say multiple events that are taking place Friday and Saturday of this week. So exciting to hear this. Friday, middle school, and Saturday, elementary school. About 30 teams competing in the middle school robotics tournament and 48 teams at the elementary robotics tournament. So if you have questions or want to attend, I know there are some slightly different procedures in place for Friday because it's a school day. That might be just available via live stream. And then Saturday, there's an option to attend in person. All the things that are going on in our district that I'm happy folks share with me. Other announcements? 7B, board requests for future consideration. Yes, Dr. Hodak?
Yes, with everything that's been going on, I've received a lot of communications regarding the borders, changing the borders and such with the schools. And I note from the process that we have in place that we have two board meetings, and then we're going to be handed it, I think, in March, at the March 17th board meeting. And I was just wondering if we shouldn't be discussing some of the issues ahead of that board meeting.
Sure, we'll take a look at the February agendas. Thank you very much. Other requests for future consideration? 7C, school board meeting norms. Mr. Manley, how did we do?
I would say we did well, but I was instructed to give it a little more flair. So I ran it through AI and came up with this. We are proud to have consistently met and exceeded the school boards' norms by arriving prepared, engage in a thoughtful and respectful dialogue, and conducting our business transparently and efficiently. This achievement reflects our commitment to fostering a positive and productive environment for our students and community.
Well done. Well done. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Jess. Yeah, you exceeded.
Yeah, so we'll, Facilities Committee of the whole, just so that you all know, will convene at Central, and we'll call that meeting to order as soon as we can all make ourselves available there.